My name is Jeff Bragman. I represent Raymond Snyder. He's the principal and owner of 91 Fowler Street. And co-counsel is here as well from the Lynn Gardner Firm. They're going to speak after me. And 91 Fowler is the lot to the southeast and adjacent to the applicant's property, which the board may be familiar with. I want to jump right into the environmental issues because they sort of set the stage for some of the procedural talk about SECR. And I was a little afraid I'd bore everybody to death if I just opened up and started talking about SECR. I do want to get to it because it's important to discuss. But this process started out with the applicant himself submitting a long form EAF Part One, which indicates that a more serious look is required for the property. And if you've been to the property, you can see why that's the case. And the Suffolk County Planning Commission was involved because of the nearness of the municipal boundary. So they're an involved agency based on that proximity. And since the town of Southampton must get a referral, they're an involved agency as well. So there are three involved agencies here. And it suggests that the existence of those three suggests that coordinating review is the most efficient and appropriate process to follow in this case. And it also gives the board some advantage, some flexibility advantage, in taking action on the application. I have to say that the Planning Commission, it's true, the Planning Commission, you don't have to override their comments. You have to override their conditions if you feel like overriding a condition. But it doesn't render their comments irrelevant, as John Bennett has sort of calmly suggested, like, oh, it's just, I don't know, it's just add-ons. In fact, the Planning Commission raised some pretty serious red flags about this application, which is quite unusual for the Planning Commission. Usually, they just send it back and say it's a matter for local determination. You may have seen some decisions like that. And they noted, you know, some deficiencies that we were aware of that are required in your subdivision laws. They noted the absence of dry well locations and a drainage plan for the entire site. And drainage and the accumulation of water on this site, the flow of groundwater, surface water, is a very important environmental issue. They also noted that most of the site is in a hundred-year floodplain, which doesn't mean, as you know, that the floods only going to happen once in 100 years. These are very excessive, forceful flooding, and they can occur many times in a year, and they're increasing in frequency because of climate change. And your comprehensive plan has some comments about the flood zone, too, that I'll get to. Also, the entire site has Class I soils, highly productive prime soils, very valuable soils. And the Planning Commission recommended a Phase One environmental site assessment of the soils on sites so that we'd know what's there. And that is, I think, a very good idea, given the fact that the pond is adjacent to the property. And as you are probably aware, most of our freshwater ponds on the east end of Long Island are in bad shape. And the village of Southampton knows this. They've actually had a water quality improvement project that puts some natural vegetation to absorb and deflect the runoff from Wicca Pog. So we know that there already is an issue with runoff. And it's runoff contamination and septic effluent that are the primary causes of nitrates and phosphates that are causing these very damaging algae blooms. It was interesting to me to read that the Planning Commission itself was reminding a village board that the project itself does not align with Village of Southampton comprehensive plan goals that are duly adopted. And those goals are not just statements in the air or opinion, because when you properly apply the SECR process in reviewing a material variation between what's proposed and what are officially adopted plans of the village constitute an adverse environmental impact. So the Planning Commission went out of its way to detail some of the ways in which this project violates the policies enunciated in the comprehensive plan. The plan notes that our rural character is defined by active farming and that extensive subdivision activity has resulted in loss of those active farms. And it actually cites the location of the Fowler property in this vicinity in describing what it calls "a major impact to community character caused by the steady loss of farmland by subdivisions." Again, those are not just comments in the air. They're specific comments that have to be taken into account as you do your SECR analysis. And they note, in particular on page 28, that there's still a large area of farms along Fowler Lane, obviously referring to this property. And they even cite, as the future use of this property in a later page, 92, that it's going to be agricultural use, which, of course, this application, if approved, would make impossible and change forever. On page 37, the village advises the public in its formerly adopted plan that the village should discourage subdivisions of this kind, particularly ones that use flag lots. And I agree with the chairman that there is a flag lot in this subdivision. They also recommend, and their regulations on a county level prohibit construction within floodplains. So they highlighted that as a violation of another policy that's enunciated in the comprehensive plan. They also noted the importance of looking at lawn maintenance, which is probably what's going to replace farm fields if there is an approval of some sort, and related issues of water usage, chemicals, nitrates, fertilizers, herbicides, fungicides, et cetera, which brings to mind the possibility that this board could require some kind of natural vegetation in lieu of some of these other methods that we've traditionally used to produce our golf-green lawns, which are pretty bad influences on the ponds. The comprehensive plan at page 73 cites that freshwater ponds are the unique natural features that make the village of Southampton distinctive from other east-end locations. And it cites specifically Phillips Pond as one of those character-creating wetland resources. It also notes that the wetlands adjacent to these ponds are fragile resources which must be protected. And I note that John Bennett repeatedly tells you, oh, well, you know, we're giving you this buffer, we've protected all this land. They're not giving you anything. He's just citing the setbacks that are required in your wetlands law. And I might add that, looking at your wetlands law, those are the minimums that are required. And you as the reviewing board are advised to exact the maximum separation that you can from these wetlands because they're so productive. So the floodplains and the adjacent, protecting the adjacent wetlands raises the possibility that you might be able to come up with some further remediation to the impacts that houses would incur. Surface water quality is obviously a big problem. As I said, the village has already had one water quality improvement project to intercept surface water runoff from Wicca Pog. But there may well be natural solutions that this board, using its powers under SECR, would want to look at in deciding exactly how these subdivision lots should lay out. And of course, everybody's aware of the dangers of the harmful algae blooms. The village of East Hampton has a harmful algae bloom action plan for Lake Agawam. And concern is real that Phillips Pond is subject to the same kinds of stresses. So the county actually also recommended, it stated that its rules were to discourage development in the floodplains. And it also encouraged the thought that environmentally sensitive lands, such as lands that are located in the floodplains and wetlands, should be removed from the lot area that's considered to be developable in these subdivisions. Now, I'm not saying you can change the law about how they define lot area in the village of Southampton. But again, it might generate some ideas about better mitigating impacts, adjusting building envelopes, for example, adjusting septic envelopes, adjusting buffer setbacks under your code in order to maximize the separation from wetlands. And returning to the Planning Commission's resolution, they encouraged the use of green methodology, which is, you know, can be these rain gardens, or it can be semi-permeable reactive barriers to manage and treat stormwater and water runoff. They also encouraged this board to not wait to look at the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, the SWIP Plan, but to make that a part of your review, which is what SECR requires because it doesn't matter whether your town, village engineer is going to approve that separately, and it doesn't matter if Suffolk County Department of Health Services is going to approve the septic systems. You, as the lead agency, still have the obligation to review all aspects of this plan. So you get to look at those, and it's important that you do that. The county also mentions that the board should pay attention to solar layout for energy efficiency, which we're all concerned about. And it had some recommendations that were also substantive. It strenuously urged that this property be developed with a cluster subdivision, which I know was enacted and exempted when it was enacted. But that does not mean that you can't make other adjustments to this plan based on the possible existence of significant adverse impacts. And, you know, I want to make a comment about the importance that John Bennett gives to the yield plan and, you know, and how much they've given back because they're not building out to the full yield. The fact of the matter is that the description of a yield plan as an "as-of-right" plan, you always hear the developers call a yield plan the "as-of-right" plan. It's not an "as-of-right" plan. Nothing is "as-of-right" under zoning and planning board review because everything has to pass through the filter of SECR. And what a yield plan is, basically, it meets, it's a plan in which lot lines, roads, accesses meet the, you know, the numerical requirements of zoning, the dimensional requirements of zoning. That's all it is. It's what can you do fitting all the setbacks in? And I can tell you, from my experience, in a town that underwent a real intensive development of subdivisions, East Hampton in the 1980s, when I was a zoning board attorney, and developers very quickly learned that fewer, larger lots were more remunerative than building a whole mass of smaller lots. So this idea that giving up a 12-lot yield was an act of generosity and deserves recognition, I think, is a little bit overstated. As I said, the county Planning Commission states as its own policy that they do not want to see development in a hundred-year floodplain. The planning board will have an opportunity to look at these lots more carefully as you embark on the SECR process. And it's possible that you could adjust building envelopes and try to make some adjustments, acknowledging the fact that these are flood-prone lots. Likewise, wetland protection. Another issue that you're going to have to deal with is an access easement to the pond. The pond is owned by the village. And frankly, the board has the right and has, in the past, required easements for maintenance and inspection. The town, sorry, the village is going to be in a position where it can monitor compliance with its own approvals, if we get an approval out of this, and giving them access for that purpose is legal and permissible, and you've done it before. The Phase One site assessment is a great idea and also should extend to the other fields that are cultivated to the south of the pond because you're going to learn, I think, as we get into some of these issues, that groundwater flow and surface water flow are affecting the quality of, the water quality in Phillips Pond. We think the flag lot should be eliminated. I understand, I've heard Mr. Bennett say several times, it's 40 feet wide where it meets the road. But if you read the definition of a flag lot, it's got a skinny little flag and a larger flag portion. It meets the definition in the code, as far as I can see. And your comprehensive plan is, rather, your subdivision plan is very clear that flag lots are not permitted on properties that have been re-subdivided. This is a property that's had several re-subdivisions. And the septic systems also have setbacks, but that doesn't mean that this board can't adjust them to get them further away from the pond. I've mentioned green methodologies, and don't need to say more about that. I think one thing that hasn't been discussed very much is that the lot area of the agricultural reserve that's proposed is a little skimpy, frankly. It's, you know, they picked the one lot that's got all the structures on it, and there are enough structures and a house on it, I might add, that serve nearly a 28-acre lot. And from just eyeballing it, it looks like the structures occupy about two-thirds of the lot. So the only, and an agricultural reserve is supposed to be property that can remain available for agriculture, even if it's not actually cultivated. It doesn't seem like their calculation of it constituting 25% is accurate. That's something I think the board should revisit and look at carefully to see if it really, if there really is an effort here to make anything that will last as a potentially farmable field. It doesn't really look that way. And with the house on it, I wonder if eventually every lot in this subdivision could become a single-family residence with this one having a large backyard. It might have an easement on it, but it could very well turn out to be just another house lot. And it certainly looks like they didn't pick the lot, they didn't pick an area of the property that, in a location and a configuration where it's likely to even be, you know, to be planted or used in any way for agriculture. And I think that's something that you can look at using the goals of your comprehensive plan as a guide. I want to talk about SECR for a minute. I'm happy to hear the board talking about coordinating review. I want to strongly urge you to coordinate review. You've got the town of Southampton as an involved party. You've got the county Planning Commission, which gave a very unusually strenuous memo about this. And you've got the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. There's an advantage to the board. I know, you know, John Bennett has repeatedly said, well, you know, when you issue your negative declaration and he's, you know, everything's going to be fine and dandy. But the fact of the matter is, if you have a coordinated review, it gives you an opportunity to have a little bit more control because you no longer are facing the decision choice that Mr. Bennett seems to be suggesting, that it's either a negative declaration or, oh, my God, it's going to be an environmental impact statement, which nobody wants to do. But the fact of the matter is, if you have coordinated review, you open up the possibility that you can use a conditional negative declaration. And additional, a conditional negative declaration gives you an opportunity for a slightly broader environmental review of unlisted actions, which might otherwise have to have either been issued a negative declaration or an environmental impact statement. What it means, a conditional negative declaration just means that when and if you see a potential significant adverse impact, you don't, you can tailor your negative, your conditional declaration, your conditional negative declaration can have conditions and mitigation in it, which gives you some breathing room where you can better control what you want to approve if you want to, if you decide that that's the direction you're going in. You know, John is very good at sort of telling you why it's impossible that you're going to see a potentially significant adverse impact on this site because if you look at the Type I list, it has, you know, 52 apartments. That's really not correct. The difference between a Type I action and an unlisted action really is in, it's in the burden of proof, what you do with the facts. It doesn't mean that a Type I action, you can have significant adverse impacts, but you can't have that in an unlisted action. No, you can have them in both. But the difference is in how the law, what the law requires you to do to treat what you see as a potentially significant adverse impact. If it's a Type I action, the law presumes that it will have significant adverse impacts. And if there may be an impact, there must be an environmental impact statement. That's because this Type I action is considered more dangerous to the environment. That does not mean that in looking at this unlisted action, you're not, you're never going to see a potentially significant adverse impact. Doesn't mean that at all. All, the difference is in what can be done with it. And in an unlisted action, if you coordinate your review, which I strongly suggest that you do, then you have the option of this middle kind of process where you can put conditions on it. You don't just have to say, everything's okay, you know, there are no environmental impacts. So if you see a potential significant environmental impact to Phillips Pond, which I suggest you are going to see, you don't have to, you're not caught in a bind where you have to say, oh, well, you know, we don't want to make them do an environmental impact statement. You can come up with conditions that mitigate and conditions that remove the danger there. So it's something to consider. And incidentally, it's not a particularly difficult process to coordinate review. All it requires is that this board, through the administrative offices, sends the application and the EAF Part One to the three other boards with your statement that you want to be the lead agency. That's all it is. Once you do that and you've coordinated review, then you can, then you get the benefit of being able to do a conditioned negative declaration. So I wanted to also say to you that I brought with me tonight some correspondence just to open the door to the issues of the pond. We've retained Dr. Gobler, Chris Gobler, whom I know you've met before.
... He's spoken more than I have. Yeah, the three-minute rule is published in your agenda, three minutes. And he's spoken more, longer than I have. And the rest is supposed to be in writing. And now he's talking about bringing stuff in from Gobler, who hasn't ever seen a subdivision that he doesn't hate.
Mr. Chairman?
It's time, yeah. Hang on a second.
I've published three-minute rule, and I've sat here and said nothing.
This is a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
It's right in the agenda.
Well, how much longer do you think?
I'm going to finish up pretty, I'm pretty much at the end. And I appreciate your time. You know, John Bennett said-
Just timeout. As I understand it, we have a three-minute rule that's published, but at the chair's discretion, we can extend that. So I'm going to let you go.
I appreciate that. I'll be considerate of your time. I'm nearing the end of my presentation. And I don't want to make John too nervous, so keep it short.
Stop referring to you by name. Stop referring to that comment.
John.
I'm professional. Do it all the time.
Please. You know I have zero tolerance. Timeout, please. You know I have zero tolerance, okay?
I just want to say-
For comments when you don't have the mic. So please, keep quiet, okay? Please continue, Mr. Bragman.
This is more in the way of a memo that raises issues and questions of information that will be helpful in assessing what's going on in Phillips Pond. It's not a definitive report on Phillips Pond. We didn't know what you were going to do tonight. So I guess it goes over to you, Mr. Waller.
What is this?
It's a story report.
I have some other comments to make about the process, but I've made the most important ones regarding the conditional negative and coordinating review. There are some rules on the decision-making process, how you do it. There's like a formula, and it's very orderly, and it provides a very good framework for your discussions going forward. But I think it can wait till the next meeting, and maybe I won't take up more time now to discuss it. I think that's about what I have to say. And just ask you to take a few more minutes to listen to co-counsel from the Lynn Gardner Firm on behalf of the same client. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman London and fellow board members. My name is Tiffany Fregenti. You received my correspondence last week. I'll try to be brief and cognizant of the three-minute rule. I am co-counsel with Mr. Bragman. I represent 91 Fowler LLC, the owner of the real property located at 91 Fowler Street. I don't want to belabor the point about notice. I understand that the village attorney reviewed my letter, but I do want to put it on the record that unfortunately, my client only became aware of this proposed subdivision upon receiving notice of today's hearing about two weeks ago. Even in this short amount of time, we reviewed the documentation submitted in support of the application. And while we can appreciate, you know, the lengthy efforts of the board and Mr. Bennett in getting to this point, we have grave concerns with the application and its compliance with certain points that were pointed out in the village planning memo of H2M. And there are still significant deficiencies. And in addition to the failure to meet notice requirements, we believe that these need to be cured before this can proceed anymore. For a few reasons that I'll discuss in a minute, the board should decline to accept this preliminary plat application, and the applicant should be required to resubmit a proper sketch plan in a manner that complies with the code and the comprehensive plan. But at the very least, this should be adjourned to give everyone proper and appropriate time to review the application and consider the undeniable environmental impacts. As I mentioned, 91 Fowler LLC was only recently notified of this subdivision. My client did not receive notice of the sketch plan application for the initial planning board hearing. I reviewed what was submitted in the Dropbox, and it does not appear that they were served with any notice. I understand that Mr. Bennett is familiar with Mr. Snyder and the property, but nevertheless, he was not served with notice. And even at this stage, we're discussing whether there's going to be public rows or easements or rights of way. And there should have been a full and fair opportunity for him to voice his concerns at that hearing on the sketch plan. And unfortunately, because of no notice, he was not able to do that. I think this is a critical misstep, particularly here where there's been concerns about preservation of this area- of this area since the sketch plan phase. I know Mr. McFarland, you pointed out some of those concerns. And, you know, this should have been something that he was given notice of. And I'm not sure how that fell through the cracks, but there's an opportunity here to stop this process and, you know, go back to the drawing board. The sketch plan that was submitted and the plan that was most recently submitted are different. There's another flag lot, and there's issues that were raised by Suffolk County that need to be addressed. In addition to the SEACRA concerns that my co-counsel raised, there are other issues that were flagged by the village consultant, H2M, which remain unresolved to this day. And I'll point out two of those deficiencies. But the first is an easement for village access to Phillips Pond. And the second is some sort of covenant and restriction or easement for the agricultural reserve. As to the access to Phillips Pond, this board has long pointed out that the pond is owned by an entity of the village.
Can I interrupt you there? Just for the record, the pond is owned by the F and C trustees.
Okay.
Not the village, okay?
Thank you for the clarification. But in any event, it would require an easement for monitoring, as was done with other ponds in Southampton Village. So there should be some sort of easement access to the pond to give that entity the ability to monitor it. This was done for Pheasant Pond, Duck Pond. It's been requested by this board, and to the extent the applicant has drafted such language, it's missing, and it's not included in the plan and/or in the application. And the board should require that and that it be provided for public review and comment. And the same applies to the agricultural reserve. It's been raised by this board, Suffolk County, the village consultant. Although it's been designated by this subdivision as an agricultural reserve, nothing prevents a future owner from developing the reserve for other uses. And the board should require that the applicant address this issue. And now is the time that it should be addressed. And they shouldn't be permitted to move forward any longer while ignoring the concerns that have been raised time and time again by this board, by the consultant, by Suffolk County. You know, Chairman London, as you eloquently stated earlier, this planning board is one that, you know, dots your i's, crosses your t's, and you like to make informed decisions. And we need more information, and we need compliance with things that have been raised by various other entities and your own consultant before any further action be taken with respect to this application. And I'll end there, but I appreciate the board's time and consideration.
Couple of questions. So you're representing 91 LLC, and Mr. Bragman, you're representing the same?
Same, we're co-counselors.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is David McMaster, and I represent Irene Albright, who is the owner of 534 Wickapog Road, an adjacent property. As already been stated, the planning board has an obligation to take a hard look at the potential impacts that this major subdivision will cause. Because I was here during the sketch plan review process, I'm concerned that this board is rushing through the process and is potentially abdicating its obligations, which include hearing from impacted community members to better inform your decision-making. So I'm glad to hear that the board is inclined to leave the public hearing open for additional comment. My client is a firm believer in the sanctity of private property and the Fowler's rights to make choices regarding their land. However, my client opposes the proposed major subdivision in its current ill-conceived form. If approved, twenty acres of rare active farmland will be lost to new development, wrecking havoc on the sensitive Phillips Pond environment and increasing congestion in the area. The view shed from my client's home and along Phillips Pond will be destroyed. Property values for all the neighboring properties will also be diminished. Now, a memo prepared by H2M points out the application as missing information about two fundamental issues: restrictions of use in the proposed agricultural reserve and the easement agreement referenced on the reserve parcel. These issues are of great concern to my client, whose adjacent property is directly impacted by them. So I'd like to remind the board that as of today, there's no inventory of the existing building and structures located in the proposed agricultural reserve, no inquiry whether they are actually used for, quote, "agricultural production." Currently, it appears that the future ag reserve area is rented to a large corporation, so it's unclear if it's actually being used for agricultural production. As a former municipal prosecutor in a town attorney's office, I can tell you that declining to take a hard look at what's going on there now will make any future enforcement actions for land use that the village wants to do incredibly more difficult. So I would just say it's imperative that the board drill down on what's actually going on, on the ag reserve. Now, as for the easement agreement referenced on the reserve parcel, my client's property is the beneficiary of this easement agreement, and I'm familiar with its terms. In my reading of the easement agreement, they're prohibited from encumbering the easement area with any additional restrictions on its usage. So that would include being placed in an agricultural reserve area. I would submit that the proposed ag reserve area cannot include the easement area as per the terms of the easement. And I also agree with H2M that the layout presented in the preliminary subdivision plan is inconsistent with the requirements of the village code, as well as the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, which clearly state that a major issue has been the steady loss of open rural sense of the village's landscape and farms. And large lots have been subdivided into residential communities. The farmland is typically replaced with houses on standard large lots. In general, the village should discourage subdivisions, particularly when resulting parcels would result in the creation of flag lots. So as the speakers before me have said, I think that the board should move to require the applicant to eliminate the flag lot, Lot 7, and with respect to the other lots, use its jurisdiction under secret to push the building envelope further back from Phillips Pond. And while the county planning commission, where the recommendations are non-binding, I agree that they're very compelling and that the board should follow them. So thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
We talk about this project only for a couple of years. So when I served as the mayor, I was first elected in 2005. And in 2007, Rick Fowler came to talk to me about this property and subdividing. Not this Rick Fowler, but his father. And two years later, his father passed away. Rick Fowler passed away. So the responsibility of a family fell on the shoulders of a young man right here. I have the privilege of calling him my son-in-law. In 2018, married my daughter, so he's my son now. And so this is important to me. And, you know, when we talk about this, I find it comical that an attorney for a property owner comes in here and talks about the environmental impact of a 125-foot setback to Phillips Pond when his client has a setback of 25 feet. He mows all the way down there. He has structures on there, aren't structures on there. And they want to come in here and talk about the environmental impact of this subdivision on Phillips Pond. It's comical to me. It's classic, "I crossed the bridge here, Schenectady Canal. Now let's take it up. Nobody else can come here." Well, the Fowler's have owned this property since 1678, when they received a land grant Christopher Fowler did to own this property here. My son-in-law is the oldest living Fowler male in that line. I have three grandchildren, I have three children. They're mine. They're part of that line. This is family planning. They own property all over the place. They own property across the street in the town of Southampton. This is planning that his father started, and his grandfather started, and his great-grandfather started in this area. Part of this is because of our tax structure at the United States level when it comes to inheritance and stuff. Okay? That's the reality. They want to farm this land. They farm the land across the street. They farm the land here. They have barns there that are used for agriculture. They have tractors in there. They have all sorts of farming equipment. They're farmers. That's what they do. Okay, so I just find it very comical that people come in and they buy. The house at 91 is there because of two-acre zoning. It was five acres. It was up for sale for five acres because they thought at the time it was three-acre zoning. I said to Midge, "It's not three-acre zoning. It's two-acre zoning. Your property's subdivisible." So that property owner at 91 is there because I found it was two-acre zoning. It's got a 25-foot buffer. Okay, so it's, so what I'm asking, and I know it's, I know what you guys are doing. I know the time that you spent, the two years that you spent working on this. I know it's been another year that you've been working on this, and I appreciate that the Fowler family does. It's hard. Anytime you run up against something like this, it's hard. It's a very difficult process. But I appreciate you guys looking at this, taking the time, dotting your i's and crossing your t's because it's very important, so. But I just want you to recognize the history associated with this, the Fowler family, the impact that they've had on this community for centuries, the volunteer work that he's a fire chief in the village, he was an ambulance chief in the village. He's the one who was responsible for building the new ambulance barn. Everybody in this room has been impacted by his volunteer work. His father was a volunteer. His grandfather was a volunteer. Fowler's beach was donated to the village by the Fowler family. The Conic Land Trust donation of 800-plus feet of space along the ocean by the Fowler family. You know, there's a land right at the end of On Wickapog that was a trail that goes down to a pond that was named after his grandfather. You know, this has been a long, drawn-out process, and I appreciate your time and effort on this, so thank you, guys.
Anyone else on this? Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We're going to leave the public hearing open. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. And I think this application has been a little unusual in its approach historically in that we spent so much time on the preliminary sketch plan. And the idea behind doing that and doing it a little bit differently was to have the tough conversation upfront. And I think that after a long time of tough conversations and some hotly negotiated topics, we came down to several key points. The view of the planning board, as far as I know, and correct me if anyone disagrees with this, was the planning board, to move this forward along, right, needed an easement to access the pond somehow, and we all agreed that we were going to figure that out as a team, right? We're both going to work because that's important. And all the associated environmental, you know, issues surrounded with the necessity in the future to potentially have to address the pond, that's number one. The structure of that reserve, right, and there is a draft, Mr. Bennett's draft of that easement in the file, but that's Mr. Bennett's cut at it. And there really hasn't been any detailed discussion of that. We were saving that to this phase and the final plat approval. The entrance or entrances and how those are going to be dealt with. There's that westernmost entrance, just as you come into that curve on Wickapog as you're going east. There's the next one a little bit further down next to the house. And then there's one around the corner. And there's been some discussion on that, how we're going to handle that. And then part of that discussion, because there were some safety issues there with that westernmost entrance, but that was all part of the discussion of, you know, what's that going to look like between the barn and Wickapog Road, and how can we clean that up and make that look nice, et cetera, et cetera. And as far as I recall, those are kind of the key things that we needed to, you know, further discussion on as this application moves through the planning board process. The things that I recall as having been heavily negotiated but agreed upon was the location of that reserve, the number of lots, how you're going to access those lots, and the size of those lots, right? And this is at a very high level. Obviously, we didn't get into the gory details of, you know, specifics of that because it was a preliminary sketch plan, right? But I think that at a high level, that stuff is locked in, right? And there's no appetite, either at the chair or any of the planning board members that have mentioned it to me, to reopen that as we move through this process. So I want to kind of, I take the time to summarize those things so everyone knows that's here, right, you know, what we'll consider and, you know, what ships have already sailed, if you will. Anyone take issue with that? All right. Sorry, Amanda. There was, the one thing that I know is one of Amanda's points, or it's not, I don't want to pin this entirely on you, but was what that looks like as you go down Fowler, whether you can see in or not, right? And that's on the table as well. But I don't view that, you know, I think that's just a discussion. I don't view that as structural necessarily, the way the location of the reserve and the entrances, et cetera, et cetera, is. So, you know, I frame this, right, so that if anyone has a different view on the board, they can bring it up now, right? So I don't like surprises. I don't like surprises as things move down to, you know, to, you know, as we go to the next steps here. Hang on one second. So that if anyone has a different view of the history here or we agree to, you need to raise your hand now. John, are you raising your hand?
No, I was just going to say that you, I think you've accurately defined and localized what's left and that the sketch plan process, even though it was elongated, did what it was supposed to do in its primary. You know, it got to the number of lots. You didn't like, we came in with 12. We had 12, we came in with 10, didn't like that. So there was a lot of discussion about that. And I think obviously you have to, you're required to keep an open mind about all this stuff, but I think there was an awful lot of, a lot of pain and negotiation about that. And it was open for everyone to see.
Yeah.
It was on all the videos, after, before and after the public hearings on the sketch plan. But I would, I, that's, I would agree with how you, you know, crystallize everything. And those issues are going to be, are going to be dealt with.
Alex, didn't we, didn't the planning board declare lead agency status on this, or we have not done that formally yet?
I don't believe that's been formally done.
And the appropriate time to do that would be when we close this hearing, or?
No, 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 no. Let me do this, please, please. This is what you have to do, because I've been doing this forever. This is what you have to do. The objectants are saying that you shouldn't have had a public hearing until you reach the determination under secret.
I understand that.
So please let me finish, because this is really critical, because I want to, in effect, defang that procedural problem.
Let me interrupt you, because I think we agree on this one. I don't, and I want to say for the record, I don't agree with the procedural objections. Here, we've checked with our counsel. They agree with that. I believe the notices were sent. I myself saw the posted notices for the preliminary. Went down there myself and checked to make sure they were posted. So as far as I'm concerned, right, the notices are out there. Now, whether your client received them or not, they were, as far as we've been able to, to determine, they were sent. And there was also that posted notice that was up there, 'cause we double-checked, personally double-checked on this one. So I don't...
No, I wanted to say something else, but I, I appreciate that. What, what I'm trying to say is, that's a notice issue.
Yep.
But what, what, what the objectants are complaining about is another issue. What they're saying, and it's, it's, it's a poorly dri, it's a poorly drafted statute because it was drafted by, you know, it's all, these Seeker subdivision regulations are made for upstate New York, too, where you don't have staff and planning. And sometimes people get things done the wrong way. But their objection is that you shouldn't have had a public hearing until you had a determination of significance, either a negative declaration or a positive declaration. And if you had a positive declaration, then you combine this preliminary hearing with the Seeker hearing. That, that, I find it strange because you would think, as somebody who wants to be heard, that they would wanna have a public hearing before the board came to either a positive, nega, or negative declaration. But be that as it may, I'm begging you to follow my proposed procedure because that will remove, this will remove that objection. What I'm suggesting is that you keep this hearing open, you coordinate under Seeker. And by the way, the Planning Commission and, um, the, uh, the Planning Commission and the town of Southampton are not involved agencies. They have nothing to do with coordination. There's one other, there's interest aid, interested agency, the two interested agencies here. This board and the, and the Bureau of Waste Water Management and the Department of Health, okay? Coordinate, declare yourself lead agency. I think that the negative declaration is the appropriate. Issue a negative declaration, and after that's done, you have this continued hearing.
Yep.
So that app, they're, they're saying you shouldn't have scheduled the public hearing until you had a negative declaration, which I think is, so, fine.
We'll have it again.
Have the negative declaration. Do the Seeker work. Then have the continued public hearing for one hearing after that.
Yeah.
That, that totally does away with their procedural, uh, objection. Whether or not you agree with their procedural objection, I wanna remove it because I don't want to give somebody, somebody something to litigate.
Understood.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just, as far as Seeker's concerned, um, I think that, uh, since we're going to, it's unlisted, the coordinated review's optional, we're opting to coordinate the review. So I think it would be appropriate at this time to, um, issue a notice of intent to serve as lead agency and coordinate the review. Um, I think it is valid to include the interested as well as the involved agencies, um, because part of the reason we do that is so that if they have insight that's valuable, we can take it. And it helps contribute to the idea that we've taken the hard look that the board is required to take in looking at all environmental impacts. I think the board also should consider the, uh, 'cause even though we didn't yet coordinate the review, this, the Planning Commission has issued comments. Some of them are Seeker-related and including, you know, the Phase One ESA request, the, uh, and, and other environmental concerns. And they should just be part of the considerations the planning board thinks of as we, as we approach, uh, the Seeker issue and begin the analysis for, um, uh, you know, that, that's anticipated once, you know, once we conclude the coordinated review.
Right. The intent, so, uh, thank you. So, uh, to declare our intention, is that a resolution or?
Yeah, I would suggest that you make a motion, um, classifying it as an unlisted action and seeking intent to serve as lead agency unless counsel.
Yes, correct. Yes, make a resolution.
Right.
State your purpose.
So, uh, in that...
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, please.
That we get counsel to petition, uh, as, as the water authority, as I call it, uh, to allow us to become lead ag, uh, lead, uh, lead agent on this application as promptly as possible.
And to coordinate.
And to coordinate for the Seeker review.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, please?
Yep.
Aye. Okay.
And, uh, it is, because we got this opinion coming from them written out, it was exhaustive as you read and everything else, um, I think we all read it in some detail, maybe more than others. There was not an issue that we had not discussed at some length already in the protracted period this has taken place. So this, we have to review stuff. Nothing was new that we hadn't pondered at great length. We had counsel for the applicant, go to great heights over Pond Access. We've done everything. We're coming back to wrapping it up, as the chairman said, but we will do it again.
So then I would ask it, thank you for doing that, I would ask that you have a resolution to, uh, keep the hearing open until such time as you've, uh, hopefully, after you've declared yourself lead agency, issued a negative declaration, but you've taken the next action that's required under Seeker, and then have a continued public hearing for at least one date after that, after your S-Seker.
Yeah.
I think that's, I, I think that does away with the procedural problem.
Yeah, I don't think I need a resolution to, to leave the hearing open, do I? I think I, as chair, you could...
I think you just declare it.
Yeah, just declare, yeah, I can declare the meeting open.
Yeah.
In order to clarify that, though, 'cause I, I wanna make sure that anybody who wants to be here for these meetings can listen, 'cause it's a hearing. If we have a, uh, special meeting for the shippies people, can we, um, just do shippies at that? Or do we have to, um, would Fowler be on an agenda for that special meeting?
Well, if you wanna make a motion, say to adjourn this, keep, keeping it open to May fifth, then that, that's the date that it would be adjourned to, even if the board had a work session in between.
Yeah, does that work for you?
Or, or you could adjourn it further if, to, 'cause that won't be enough time for the Seeker coordination, um...
It will if the county decides that they send you, you have, the county has thirty days to decide. I've seen the county send it right back, so, yeah. You should keep it on the May fifth for control date.
Let's keep it on May fifth. If it doesn't happen, we can just, we can adjourn it to the meeting after that.
Well, that way you have a date certain.
Yeah, so we have a date certain, so people that wanna be here can be here and know that the next time we're gonna talk about this is May fifth, right?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay?
Thank you.
Good. Okay.
I, I'd like to add for the record, since this is recorded, that the review that I referenced included much of, of what the former mayor talked about with the history of the family, a history of, of their efforts at estate planning. A great deal has been done, uh, not formally, not of record, but, uh, we've been extensive in our investigation of all the issues that are involved with family planning, with generations. We still haven't got a major issue, everybody knows we have to deal with the terms of what's reserved. The village doesn't have all the spectrum of establishment of what the town does and the state and everything else about an agricultural reserve. The village is brand-new. And there are not many farms left in the village. But we're, we're gonna have to resolve that issue. We all know that. We've discussed it many times. But the history of the family and what they intend to do is well-known to us, and we've talked about it many times.
Thank you.
So was there a, a motion to continue the hearing on May fifth?
I think, Mr. Chairman, um, I have a request from co-counsel.
We, we can't record your comments on the minutes unless you're at a microphone, so you need to be recognized by the chair.
The, uh, co-counsel has a conflict on that day. Can we, can you bump it back a week?
I have another word from this large firm.
You wanna, you wanna bump it to, um...
Like one week?
The following week.
It's two weeks.
It's two weeks, the nineteenth.
Over my objections.
Yeah, hang on a, hang on a second.
Not right.
I, I think you need to work on this, all right? Here, let me land, all right? As you heard earlier, this has been going on for ages, right? And, um, I, I think, um, the trustees have directed us, um, and, and we all agree that people that have applications pending before the planning board deserve these, deserve these applications to be moved on as quickly as we can. And to stall that because you can't make it, I, I have an issue with, right? So...
Respectfully, Chairman, I, I understand, and I'm not looking to delay anything any further. Any other week would be, I will happily make it work, change things around. I'm going to be out of the country. We just got notice of this. I made it here today, got my letter in, voicing my objections. Again, not looking to delay, just as a professional courtesy, I would just appreciate if May fifth could, could be adjourned. I understand there's been a lot of effort. This is two years underway, again, but another two weeks, I don't think it's gonna kill anyone, and I, I just would really appreciate it if, you know, we could put it on for the next date. That would allow sufficient time for everyone to coordinate review, do whatever diligence needs to be done on our end as well. It's a tight timeframe, and I think that another two weeks would actually benefit everyone to get resolution on, on some of these issues. Maybe we could explore other resolution and perhaps, um, you know...
Yeah, I understand you're not gonna be here, but May fifth is almost a month away, right? So to delay this six weeks when I don't, I don't think we necessarily do...
We can do it the week before.
Happy to hear on this, I, I had a major subdivision in the town of Southampton one time, and I flew three days later to meet my family and friends, because that's how important it was. So if it's important, and, and this, send somebody else from the firm, do it all the time, that's, that's an absurd request.
Yeah. Any other views on the board on this?
I don't see changing the date.
Can we move it up a week? I'm happy to.
No, our, our planning board meets on specific dates each month.
And... I mean, a special meeting we could do.
So we, we're willing to do special meetings because, you know, everyone isn't a, a year-round resident on the board. Some people actually travel from a, uh, long distance to get here to these meetings, so having a set agenda, um, is important. You know, again, the shippies, we're willing to make, um, uh...
What is the date of the shippies special meeting?
We have, it's, it's... We don't know yet.
Perhaps you could just put them on together?
It may not occur. Y- um, you know, for now, I'm gonna leave this on May fifth. We're still waiting to see if we get, uh, what we need from, uh, the, the health department, right? Aren't we waiting for something? Didn't you mention?
For shippies?
No, for this one.
For this one? Um, well, the, I, I think, well, we have to do the coordinated review.
Yeah.
So that, it, in theory, they, they have thirty days, but John's right that sometimes they will just write back, "We have no objection," in which case the coordinated review concludes, 'cause we only have to really coordinate with them, uh, that one agency. But, uh, and other than that, we do need the plans to reflect what, I, I don't think you wanna close a hearing until the plans have addressed the issues that you raised and you're waiting on them to address.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it on the fifth, uh, and, um...
Thank you.
We'll revisit that, um, behind the scenes based on whether they want a coordinated review or they, they decline. You know, they just say, "Not, not our problem."
Yeah, I think that...
Okay? Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but, you know, I, we just cannot hold this up for one person any longer.
Should we put a written comment?
Pardon?
Should we submit written comments?
Yeah, you can always submit written comments as well. That's, that's fair.
So is there a, a motion?
We need a motion for, um, to hold this open to May fifth, correct? A second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Anna. All in favor?
Thank you, your time.
Okay, great, thank you. John, are you doing Connemara tonight? Or Connemara's on, Connemara, is that, that's on our agenda for tonight? Are you, you're gonna do that?
Is it next?
You're next.
Yep. So that concludes, uh, public hearings, and now we're on work session discussions.
Yeah, sorry, that concludes our public, thank you, Alex. That concludes our public hearing. We're gonna move on to work session.
John, I think you're gonna face that towards you for the cameras. They switched it at one point. I think it's always towards you now, yeah.
They, as soon as you get used to it, they're gonna change it again.
Yeah.
Connemara.
Yes, thank you. Um, sometimes when I see the name, I wish I wasn't Connemara. Wonderful area. This is Debbie Hirst's house on First Neck Lane. The property currently has, uh, forty thousand square feet. Then we wanna transfer twenty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven square feet to her house property, taking it from a, um, three-acre, more or less, lot that she owns, uh, to the east, and of course, the flag is, is to the south. So we had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because even though this lot two is in excess of a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, so it's, um, uh, since it's a flag lot, you have to have more than a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. So, so we went to the Zoning Board, but in transferring this property, this one, this twenty-six thousand square feet, to this acre property, which is in a three-acre zone, you're greatly reducing, well, you're significantly reducing the degree of nonconformity of the existing house lot. So, um, this should bring the lot area of fifty-two First Neck Lane down to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty square feet. And fifty First Neck Lane would become more conforming with sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty square feet. Nelson Pope thought we need to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There was some sort of hyper-technical arguments that would go either way, but we just decided to go there. And on March twenty-seventh, I appeared before the ZBA for the relief, and the ZBA granted the relief without really much discussion. They have this new procedure where if there's really not an issue, they do something called a, uh, what's, what's the name of it?
Short form.
A short form, um, decision. And when do they do that? They do that when there's no opposition and they're gonna grant it, so they don't think anyone's gonna bring an action on it, so they just do a short form. So this is now, in effect...
Where's that case? Where's that case? Where's that case? This is, uh, I think I put it in my pocket, 'cause I was, I was doing some last-minute research on this.
Um, once the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, grants the relief, um, that essentially becomes the zoning for the area. That's, uh, Thurman versus Hallahan and Pavone versus Planning Board, which I'll, I can send copies of this to counsel. So this, it's, it's, once the ZBA has granted the relief, there are no, in effect, nonconformities. Um, prior to, I'll just read, prior to seeking formal approval for their preliminary subdivision, petitioners have paid approval from the ZBA. I'm reading from Pavone versus Planning Board. Therefore, the lots with the approved variances were conforming when they appeared on the subdivision map. So that has, in effect, become the zoning for the area once the ZBA granted the relief. I don't think there are any issues here. No density is being created. You have two lots before, you have two lots after. This First Neck Lane lot, well, there were First Neck Lane lots, but this, uh, lot number one becomes much more conforming. So it's a good thing. And, um, this is sort of a strange-looking lot in terms of what you do here, so it makes more sense just to have the main portion of the lot in a rectangular shape. That's all there is to it.
This is R one-twenty, this area.
The whole property's R one-twenty.
Lot, I can't read that writing.
What do you want me to read?
Well, lot two is how many today before, before the ZBA decision was...
Before the ZBA, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven square feet.
Minus the flag.
No, that's with the flag, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, here we go. Area including, bum, 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 bum. Yeah, that's, that's the existing configuration. It's lot, it's a hundred and fifty-five, six fifty-seven. Yeah, and then you have to take the flag.
And how, how much does the flag take out?
It makes it exactly one...
What was it?
One-twenty?
One fifty.
Makes exactly-
Not a hundred and fifty thousand.
No, the flag's more than five thousand square feet. It's gotta be.
When you take out from this existing lot of one fifty-six, when you take out this flagpole portion to here-
Yeah.
This portion of the lot is actually a hundred and fifty thousand square feet exactly.
So when John says it's a hundred and fifty, what'd you say, a hundred and fifty-six today?
Yeah.
That includes from the, from First Neck?
Through the entire lot.
Through the entire lot?
Yeah.
And when we take out that rectangle-
It was a hundred and fifty even.
But now-
It's going to be one twenty-nine, three eighty. When you take out the flag, it'll be exactly one twenty.
Exactly one twenty.
Got it, okay.
So we were able to say that even if it doesn't conform to the flag lot requirements, it conforms, it conforms to the R120 zoning.
Yeah, and how, why does the flagpole there?
Twenty-four feet. Twenty-four point seven five, the course is right there, or the distance, I should say.
And how is that landscaped today?
Oh, it's, this lot isn't in use.
So it's not landscaped? Okay.
Debbie wanted to avoid the deer.
Oh, she put a, yeah, that's right.
If the garden goes in on Pond Lane. Okay, that's what she told him.
Yeah.
And how's that gonna, how's that gonna?
She can fence all her property and not have the deer come in from the garden.
It says-
She has- Separating-
Beautiful garden back there.
Which is not, which is currently on-
On the large lot.
It's on the large lot.
Yeah.
What is lot one?
Uh, lot two.
Lot two.
Yeah, sorry, gets confusing.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Any, at this end, any questions on this one?
I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion to approve, all in favor?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Just so you know, I still have to go to the, the ZBA approved it, thank you for approving it, I still have to, I think the Health Department-
Yeah. Have we seen the ZBA opinion? Have they written a memo on this?
I think we're still waiting for that short-form decision to get signed by the chair.
That's true, yeah.
And the short form?
It's basically a written decision, but it's one that's prepared by council and signed by the chair, it doesn't have to go through a second board meeting for review.
Okay.
There was affirmative vote to do it, yeah.
March 27th? Is it March 27th?
Oh, that's right here in my-
Yeah, March 27th.
Okay. All right, Fifty-four North Main. I'm gonna step out because I'm accused on this one.
Oh, we forgot about that.
Yeah, exactly.
Does it face me or the-
It faces you.
Me? Thank you. Okay. Okay, great. Good evening, board members, I'm Liz Vale, I'm with the law firm of Greenberg Charter, we're at twenty-three seventeen Montauk Highway in Bridgehampton. I've been here many times. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant Fifty-four North Main LLC, which is for the two-lot subdivision, it's a reduced-density subdivision of Fifty-four North Main Street. It's comprised of one point six seven acres, seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty square feet, and it's in a split zone, R20 and R7.5 zoning districts. There's an existing fifty-three hundred square foot office building in the front and then in the back, there is an existing, pre-existing, nonconforming wood shop. We are proposing to take the wood shop and make it a conforming residential, residence, conforming with zoning. That's the area that's zoned R7.5, which is right here, the front is zoned R20. So we had to go to the zoning board of appeals, we obtained relief for the flag lot entrance and we are here today hoping that the board will move forward with final conditional approval since I believe we've addressed every outstanding issue that the board has raised since we've been coming here. I think at one point even John Bennett testified as a neighbor in favor of the application, which is nice that he's here. Does the board have any questions for me at this time?
Last time we lacked a quorum too.
Yes, last time you didn't have a quorum, so-
The review. I tried to voice all my personal opinions as to the applicant not doing the right thing, but with a relief of fifteen feet to pass this more recently expanded off, damn office building, I think with the consensus was that we would approve it, but the people can weigh in now, we-
That's right.
We've discussed it.
Some of us were wounded when we weren't here, but we can put that to a vote to approve it.
Well, I think this is on for a work session and for procedure, I think we have to put this on for public hearing and quote, and then-
There was a public hearing.
On the-
This is like, this is the vote.
Oh, okay.
I thought, I thought we did.
Oh, okay.
No, I thought it was to vote.
Yeah, I think this was to hold the vote. So you make a motion?
I will make the motion that we approve it.
Is this gonna be subject to a written decision?
And get counsel to give us a written opinion, which I will sign in the absence of the chairman. And if someone seconded, we can move.
Sure, I'll second.
Seconded, okay. The eyes, the eyes, the record shows the eyes have it.
Thank you so much, board members.
Thank you for your patience, ladies.
It's been a journey, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And patience.
East End Holding LLC, thirty-eight forty, forty-two Jobe's Lane.
Did we skip?
Uh, one oh five.
I'm sorry, Bridgehampton Realty, yeah, one oh five Realty, sorry.
See you, old architect.
I'm Chris Burnside from Bridgehampton Realty Group, the owner.
Last time I came here by myself and I did the site plan and then the board has asked us to do the yield plan, which we have the square holding to produce the yield plan. And the yield plan, we provided two. One, we have, we, the zoning is twelve point five, R20.5, so we can actually do four on this side and then keep the existing lot at the house, which is, we're shaped lot, and then we can create four. And then we can also create three and both will be conforming to the R12.5 zoning. And then we did put the road in the middle so that all the utility can be under one road. And this one, I thought called it set in the back and this one in the middle.
Questions?
We got two different alternatives out here.
Well, I think these are just yield plans, right?
Yield plans, yes.
Just to show you what they could, what they could do. What you're still proposing is just two lots.
Just two lots, correct.
Right.
So when I purchased the property, I actually went to the housing, Curtis Heisman at the Housing Authority to see if they would be interested in it. I also went to the village because this property backs the village property and it also abuts the town property. So, when I purchased it, the idea was I was gonna just sever off the house and then offer the rest of it to whoever wants to buy it, is really what it came down to. I think pretty much everybody said no, they weren't interested, so I said, "Okay, I'll just subdivide it and put two houses on it."
Right.
Yeah, this is owned by the town, right? This is owned by town, this is owned by the village.
The back portion is owned by the village.
Yeah, this is village, this is town, this is the property that's here and then there's the little, little piece here.
It's across from the Village DPW.
Right.
Actually, they actually use the property to access the town and the village property to mow it, so they've actually mowed, you know, clear pathway across.
This is the pathway to go to the back.
So when I spoke to Jacqueline, I guess Fenlon, she said, you know, they couldn't purchase it with CPC funds, I guess, make sure I got this right, with a house on it, it would have to be kind of, the house would have to be severed off. And then they wanted to have part of it as reserve and it just went back and forth and I just was like, "Listen, it's getting too complicated here, if you want it, buy it, if not, you know, I'll just move on and you're more than welcome to purchase it if you want it."
But their answer is-
I think that-
Not interested.
Well, it wasn't a firm, "No, I'm not interested," they all are interested in it, it's, it's just a process, right? So they went out, did an appraisal, I just had it appraised as well.
Yep.
But she said that, you know, you'd have to, they could push it through to subdivide it, but then it was like, "Well, you can't do affordable housing with town money," so you'd have to get part of the money from the town and some of it from the village and then nobody would want it in the village, so then it was like, "Well, if you cluster the houses with Board of Health, they have to pay credits," and it was like, too much complication for me, so I just said, "Look, I'll subdivide it into two lots, two one-acre lots, and then you guys requested a yield study for some reason." And I actually prefer to have three lots, so, you know, take your pick, you want two or three?
It's up to Curtis Heisman.
I mean, it's, you know, it's R12.5 and two one-acre lots is fine. I mean, it's a little excessive for the neighborhood because most of those houses are on tiny little lots, in fact, the front house, there was a nineteen twenties little house there, which I just renovated, I put in a pool. And unfortunately, because I could almost put another house back there, if you think about it, because everybody's trying to, you know, get affordable housing and stuff, I was like, you know, put a little house in the back, but they were, in the village, it was like-
Yeah, so let's talk about the plan that you want to do now. So I think in the lower left side of that center, it says lot one, the middle one, right?
This one?
Yeah, so to, to the left of your finger there, doesn't it, yeah, where it says lot one.
So that's an existing house right now and kept, and I've kept it in its entirety and I've completely renovated and added a pool.
So that two-story house that's existing with the garage behind it?
Exactly the same way it's been.
That whole lot there is gonna be one lot separate, okay? So then the question becomes, what are we gonna do above the, now our formerly Joseph-
He's still there.
Yeah, so you wanna put two lots back there, correct?
That was my original plan because that was the simplest course of action.
Yeah.
And then when you had asked me to do a three lots and I sat down, the yield plan, I was like, "Great, I'll take three."
And then we fell in love with the three.
Yeah, I prefer the three, yeah, I could put, you know, smaller houses and it actually works out quite well, except that I would need to purchase some, some credits to get that plan to work and it's a little bit more expensive with the cul-de-sac and-
How many credits would you need?
I think it was-
We haven't calculated.
They did tell me, I think it was like a one point two credits, one point three credits.
So not a whole lot of credits?
Yeah, it's not a tremendous amount, I've already tracked them down.
So I think the biggest question from my perspective is, you know, the comprehensive master plan and the planning board really disfavors flag lot access, particularly where it's done by easement, right? So the big ques- Especially done when it's done by easement. So the big question is, all right, how do you propose accessing however many lots you want to put in back there?
Well, we've pretty much exhausted, there is no other way to do it, you could put this little cul-de-sac in and it conforms, but no matter how you access the lots off the cul-de-sac, technically there's still gonna be some type of flag to get to it.
But, but not by easement, but by right?
By right.
By rights.
By right, yeah, by rights and even with the-
There's no other way to do it without a flag that anybody can think of, so as long as you're gonna do that, then the objective, the objective would be to minimize the poll and do it by right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we wanna see, what, you know.
And that's what was the original plan that we did.
Right, and then the second part, as I recall, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, you had originally had the proposed road going down the far east side of the flagpole and we suggested that in order to landscape that, to make it look nice, to make sure you have the space and ability to, you know, landscape that flagpole to make it look nice as possible. Right?
That's, that's it, you hit the nail on the head.
Yeah, okay.
So, you just-
So what, you know, what's next and what do we need?
We are not very versed in this, tell us what-
So we made the application to do the subdivision and then you came back to me-
Yep.
And said you wanted to see the, you know, the yield study, so we produced two yield studies as requested.
So we appreciate that, thank you, we can see what we could do there and how to do it. Alex, what do we do next then?
So if the board feels that they have enough information, we could schedule a public hearing, which is required for a subdivision. The board will also need to, at some point, classify the action for seek, this would be, I think, an unlisted action and declare, they intend to seek lead agency.
Yeah. Everybody, are you ready to do that?
Yeah, for sure.
You good? You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so I need a motion to, what, do we need a motion to say we're ready to move forward here or?
I would say have a motion to schedule a public hearing.
All right.
If we wanted to do that on the May 5th date, I think there's still plenty of time to do that.
Does that work for you, all May 5th?
Not going anywhere.
Yeah, motion to have a public hearing for this application on May 5th. Yeah, a second, please.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye?
And would you like also to declare the board's intent to seek lead agency?
Yes.
And for a coordinated review of the unlisted action.
Yeah, so a motion for what Alex said, please. All right, will you make that motion in a second?
A motion that we can seek coordination, if you will become lead agency.
Second, all in favor? That's what happens.
Maybe talk some sense into the village, I personally don't see why the village would not wanna take an abutting piece of property and the town wouldn't wanna take the other piece, I mean, it just-
Not under process, the process of governance in a village is always bleak.
Yeah.
So the next meeting, you want to put us on the agenda, May 5th, right?
May 5th.
Is there a deadline to file anything?
What are you looking at?
Do we just show up?
Do we need to file anything? Is there any additional paperwork that we need to file?
Well, you'll have to do the mailing and posting.
That's it.
Is there something additional?
I don't know, I'm asking you, is there any papers that we need to fill out for the May 5th?
Well, as long as you're still proposing the application as you originally proposed it, unless you have any modifications or changes or additional information.
I think they might have the modification, I don't know if we saw the one with the easement in the center for the-
Okay.
And then, I don't think we have a short form, environmental form on this, which we'll need to send out with the coordinated review.
I don't see it in the file.
Okay, yeah, if we don't have that-
You'll need a short environmental form.
So if you could do that, you know, you just use the online mapper to fill out the short environmental form and then you put in your project details and if you can get that into the village as soon, that form would be pretty quick to complete as soon as possible, so that will go out with the coordinated review.
And I think we wanted to see the building envelopes shown and, for example, if you have any landscape details for the flag lot, you'll submit that as well.
We did that on the first, the first plan, I think we gave you.
Okay.
But we can resubmit it.
Did they submit it already?
It's the first, look at the first outline.
I think I submitted the short-
Okay, all right, I'm looking through it online.
We did building envelope, Board of Health, driveway access, the whole thing.
I just, I don't-
All right, I do see it, sorry.
I see the short environmental, I did that. I think the only thing probably is the landscape, if you suggest me to do some landscape. So if we, you're gonna go for this? Um, so if we, you're gonna go for this one?
I'm just gonna keep the two, keep the two.
You gotta make a choice.
I mean, if you did, if the board didn't have an objection to doing three, I would clearly prefer to do three lots, but I don't really plan to do a long process.
So if we're gonna, if we're gonna do a, a middle, uh, access, like, uh, whatever lot, this one or that one, do we need to, uh, do, is there a deadline for us to put it in, or is it already in there? Consider it already in there, right?
We already put it in.
We, we have the, the plan, um, that, the, the original plan, the two lot plan, but you should.
We have this one too, you submitted it too, you submitted this.
I only submitted this as the yield study.
He did these two for the yield study, it should be in your, your.
Yeah, we have the yield study, but I'm saying for the, that, that's my understanding, is that the, that's the plan that's submitted for, for subdivision application. So the, um, in the original form that you're looking at there, you showed the easement all the way to the right, um, and the, the, the request was that you keep the lot lines where they are, but put the easement in the center so it can be landscaped on either side. So I think having that plan just revised to show that moved easement, so that they can see that it can, we can actually provide the, um, the screening for the driveway that is preferred.
And you did that landscape plan, the gates and the cedars going up the road.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Okay, you know what to do?
Yep, I think so.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I, I follow Alex all the time, all the boards, we follow Alex.
Okay, uh, now East End Holding, John, that's you, right?
Hi, John Bennett, and, um, so this is, uh, um, on Job's Lane, and, um, so Job's Lane, we're gonna take down all these buildings, um, and, um.
What, what numbers on Job's Lane?
You know, this is, uh, what used to be here.
Fountain, it's the, it's right, the outdoor.
Thirty-six, yeah, fountain, yes.
Like a mall.
Thirty-six, thirty-five, or thirty-six.
So to speak, yeah.
Yeah, if you're Palm Beach, you would be really doing great, but we're not, you know?
This has always been like a real retail dead end.
Yes, because it was really pretty for a while, you know? It's a nice, it's a nice type of fountain, but it's not bad, I know we need to change it, we need to get some life there.
Yeah, no, 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 I couldn't, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
But thank you, yeah, this is, you know, there's a sort of fountain in there, this is.
Oh, no, no, these are the bricks.
Oh, the bricks, yes, it's the bricks.
The bricks.
Otherwise none of the planning boards is bricks and flamingos.
Yes.
Bricks and flamingos, bricks and flamingos.
Same owner?
Same owner.
Same owner, replay. It was gonna, last time it was before the board, it was to combine the properties, which were all old houses that were torn down, and it was gonna be, people objected because, number one, there was a neighbor that was upset.
Yeah.
Or, or, number two, it was too big, about about two feet on the, the maximum scale, but it was a fraction of, of the house of the structure of the corner, and it was gonna go too far back.
The way this is set up now, actually, is to F, if you look at F, that's gonna be a, if everything works out with the other boards, that's going to be a walkway.
All the way through the block?
Yeah, with, if everything works out, the thought is just to dedicate it. I don't wanna make any promises, 'cause I have to see what's gonna happen.
That was the, that was the prior master plan.
Yeah, just to dedicate that to the village.
Simi thought it was wonderful to get more access to a parking lot that no one uses, so he has to get more access.
So, John, sorry to interrupt, but.
So what happened here?
I, well, I had a really hard time trying to decipher this from the drawings.
It should be, let me, let me tell you what happened here, this, 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 the way the existing lots are, and I'm, I'm really dating myself right now, but this was gerrymandered, because many, many years ago, there was a house there. It was a single-family residence there, and I remember, 'cause, oh, these things stick in your memory. My, my mom and I used to drive, the woman who lived there, from church up on Hell Street, she, she lived there, and I remember, as a young kid, I remember being amazed, and, oh my God, someone actually lives on Job's Lane, it was a, it was an old, old house. So, uh, when they set it up this way, it was gerrymandered to take care of that, there was a house here. It was literally a single-family residence here, which then went away, and this, I guess, you know, Tom Burke and, uh, what's his name? Phillips had the idea to do this in here, and unfortunately, it's just been a retail dead zone ever since it was, it's too bad. It, you know, you think would have some potential, and people would say, oh, if you have a, like a food place, you could bring people in, but until there's a sewer, which God does, when that's gonna happen, that's just never gonna happen. So what's, if you look at the center, you'll see where all the transfers are going, the net effect, the easiest thing is just to look at the, I think, uh, is to look at, um, the proposed lot configuration. It's gonna be three straight lots, the way they should be, there is no minimum lot area requirement in the village business zone, none, zero. So there are three lots now, we're trying to make it into three more commonsensical lots, um, I mean, you've got strange stuff. You have, we just have this one lot that has twelve feet of frontage, so these are all gonna be twenty-two, twenty-two feet.
But why three lots?
Three buildings.
So the idea is to put three long and narrow buildings there?
Yep.
Gotcha.
It's no, it's no longer a zone for residential, is it going to be the commercial structures?
It hasn't been, it's village business, you could, you, uh, you, I don't think, I don't think you could have, well, you could have, I think the only residential stuff you can have in a village business is, is with a special permit.
Apartments with a special.
Apartments, yeah.
Show me, where is the part where the, you said there's going to be a walk-through between?
F.
Just one, just on the one side, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, so that, right, okay, so this is, and then what is the, so the other is, the jagged one is something else?
That's the way it is now.
Those are these?
Right, they're just.
There's no courtyard, there's three lots, no courtyard.
Oh, okay, but this is, okay, this is the walkway, okay, sorry, yeah, thank you.
The, the buildings will probably, I mean, some of these non-conformities are gonna go away, 'cause the buildings will probably be, this will be more open back here, um, but I think it's great, 'cause it gives this access, um, and, you know, the thought, my client said, well, maybe they'll just give an easement, and my response candidly was, just dedicate it. If it's an easement, you still have liability, so just dedicate it.
East, east side.
So, and I think hopefully, um, Susan will be less concerned, 'cause I know she was very concerned about it, because you can have, in the village business area, you can have either a zero lot line, a party wall, but this will give some light and air to her antique store here, so hopefully, I don't wanna speak for her, but hopefully that'll be helpful, and that's, that was the place to put it.
But she.
She owns Caldwell Alexander's backyard.
Caldwell Alexander, oh my gosh, that's right.
That was his, that was his house.
You're talking about the antique store there, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The antique store is.
It's here, is that, that's, it's right above the walkway, right?
Right above the walkway, to the west of the walkway.
Yes, it's noted here, it says.
The east of the walkway.
Yeah, the mom's.
And I know she was concerned, because the prior plan had a zero setback. The prior plan had a zero lot line setback, which you can have in the village business zone, you, you don't have to have, I mean, it's, 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 it's set up to do party walls, or just walls built up against one another. Uh, look at the, um, if you look at, for example, the, oh, what's with the, um, White's Pharmacy, it's all over, I'm sorry, all over the, White's Pharmacy, and the building to, next to it, what is that, that's the, um, real estate store?
It used to be the bookstore, right?
Used to be the bookstore, unfortunately, it's, the bookstore's not over there, yeah, but that's a, that was.
Rejectibles or something?
Zero lot line, yeah, unfortunately, the bookstore's not over there, you have to go to Sag Harbor to see Greg.
That's sad that we don't have bookstore, it's a bad reflection, sorry.
Before the former one attracted a, a petition of about, I guess, fifteen hundred people to make it a restaurant, or, you know, it was too deep, and they were gonna make it shorter, and have the village trustees grant part of the parking lot to deal with the plumbing, and put housing upstairs, which was part of the plan, to get maximum housing above all the stores that are being built.
I don't think there's gonna be any new housing above the village stores until you.
This is the history of the prior application, which was so protracted.
Are these gonna be, are they two-story buildings, or?
Yeah, two-story.
Two-story buildings, with what, with retail on the second floor also?
It'd be office or retail, one of the two, yeah. So, would it be easier if we, if I bring in the actual old wood site plan, I'll say it, I mean, that's.
Do you have it with you?
Yeah, it's, it's all drawn.
Yeah, that would be a lot, that'd be helpful.
Billy, can we, do we have, do we even have it, let me see.
Because it, it is, I'm looking at this, when you designated lot one, has a building on it, right?
Lots, lot, lot, one and three. Two galleries in.
It's two galleries in the courtyard.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, it's, maybe these are still in draft.
These are still in draft, but I, just conceptually? Let me show you what's going on. So these are still in draft, but I just want you to generally see, these are CMAC's drawing the plans, but, um.
Well, CMAC's drawing?
Yeah, so in, in site plan, um, they become.
Can we get closer on the camera?
It's actually three, no, this is the one, okay, here it is, it's three.
Thank you, thank you.
If you could push it up a little.
It also, I'm sorry, it also adds, we can, we can get some spaces in the back, um, because interestingly enough, um, there are quite a bit of parking variances on this, as you can imagine, 'cause there ain't no parking on site, so hopefully we'll be able to get some parking back there, if we can, if we can fit the wastewater back, and, and we'll have new wastewater and all that great stuff. Trying to see if CMAC has any elevations, no, it's, so it's gonna be a more typical, I mean, this is subject to review by the A or B, but it's gonna be, look like the rest of Job's Lane and Main Street look, you have continuous buildings.
Are those buildings each, like, there's some space on either side within the lot, as?
No, they're, the, the three buildings will have party walls, thank you.
Oh, okay, so is that the same one, those are three, that's one big building, or wait?
I'm sorry, Amanda, what?
I'm not understanding that drawing exactly, but it's.
That is, you're looking at the three lots developed, so we'll look from the outside like one building, but it's, it's gonna,
okay, that's just a question.
It'll function as three individual buildings.
Okay, but it's one building and three, okay, so it's a large building.
So, so that's what I understand, if it looks like one building, and it is effectively one building with one roof, right? Why do I need three lots?
So they can sell three buildings.
But it's one building.
Well, it's, it's a space inside the building, it's like a condo, right?
It's like.
It's like a condo.
Yeah, except they're, they're fee title, yeah.
Exactly, so you're try, I got you, and then do those buildings go, uh, all the way north, south to the?
No, right here, I wanted to show, that's, we're trying, one of the nice aspects of this, we can get some parking in there, in the back now, where there is.
So where that building is back there now, that's kinda empty?
Yeah, it'll be shorter.
That would be then be.
We're seeing a hundred and thirty-six feet going back, so how large will the building be?
Seventy-five feet.
Oh, okay, so it's on the south.
Because now you have this code section that says, they're only supposed to be seventy-five feet deep.
Got it, so, so the, the south end is gonna be, is, is gonna be parking?
Yeah, yeah, and parking and septic, that's what I should say, so I think that makes a lot of sense. The reason you can do that is, you know, that, this stuff was all before, those limitations came in, a lot of variances granted here, so now you have, you'll be able to take all that space and use it to improve it.
Three separate owners, uh, one owner, and they lease out the different buildings?
It could be, it could be.
You're just reserving the right to break it apart and ha, sell it later?
Exactly.
But in its first iteration, you see one owner, one owner making one large building, and having the three?
Well, technically, technically, they're, I don't wanna mislead anyone, technically, they're three buildings.
Okay.
They're, they're gonna be styled to look like.
Okay, so she's just.
Their outer walls.
Yeah, which you can do, 'cause you, you have, you can have zero, zero lot line setbacks in the village.
But when you walk in, there's walls, and they're separate inside, actually, okay.
And John, on the current site plan, the lot one, the box that's designated lot one, which is a one-story building, I can't see how wide is that building?
Uh, thirty-two plus fourteen, it's, what is that, it's about thirty-seven feet wide. I'm just reading the two courses, uh, along the back, see, one says thirty-two, and one says fourteen, so it's like, between thirty-six and thirty-seven square feet. So that's all, it's, it's gonna be a clean slate.
On the Job's Lane side, it's, it's.
Oh, on, I'm sorry, on the Job's Lane side?
Yeah.
Which one were you talking about, Mark, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Sorry. This one, how, how wide is this building right here?
That's the one to the west, right?
Correct.
Well, and it's flattest, because it's a pretty strange building, isn't it?
Like excluding the porch, I mean, I see a twenty-five there, is that?
Oh, yeah, it's like, yeah, twenty, excluding, it's twenty-five including the porch, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think what was in there, that, that French, uh.
Was that that French, something?
Which I was told, which I was told means.
Crankshaft, in French.
That's where the, believe it or not.
Uh, yeah, I gotta touch that, so there are comps.
Can't make this stuff up.
There are comps along Job's Lane for twenty-five foot wide stores, spaces, you know where I'm going with this?
Yeah, they're even small sometimes, yeah.
Okay.
There's no, interesting, the village business, there's no, there's, there's not, there's no minimum size lot, and there are no, the only setbacks are either zero or fifteen.
Yeah, Alex, do you have any questions on this one?
No, just know that this will come back to the board for a site plan review, when it's proposed, um, it'll likely, it'll have to go to the architecture review board.
Yep, of course.
Um, presume if there's anything that doesn't comport with zoning, it would also go to the zoning board, but likely it would comply unless there are parking relief or something.
It's interesting, parking and ADA access. Yeah.
There were issues last time.
We're actually gonna bring in some spaces where there, I mean, I can't believe the number of variances, I mean, guilty of a job. They've got a lot of parking variances, it's a long time ago, it's a long time ago, a lot of variances for parking, which we'll try to, we're gonna try to create some on-site parking.
Yep, Lisa, anything you wanna flag at this point?
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see, I, I know it's for site plan, but, um, like, I'd love to see the, how they're executing it, um.
Yeah, sure, we could, can we do that, Billy? Let me see how far along CMAC is, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get you what he has.
Yeah, 'cause it's just, you know, I mean, I, I think that it, um, you know, they're, they're, just like every site, they're constrained because of septic in the village, which is why they can't put apartments over these.
That's right.
Um, so there's gonna be little offices and shops, I suppose, um, and I think that the getting that right-of-way access to the rear lot is, is really a nice feature. Um, it, when you get to site plan, it'll be nice to consider, like, you know, if there's any landscaping potential or anything in the back there, to, to look, to make it look really nice on that side, um, but the, the code doesn't have any guidelines for the village business district, like he said, so there's.
Wide open.
It's, it's really just a matter of, um, when I first looked at this, my concern was, I, I, I didn't know that the buildings were coming down, and I'm like, this makes no sense, why would, why would we change the lot lines and, and put lot lines between buildings? Um, but if, you know, if, if, if the lots are going, if all the buildings are being demolished, then, um, then that concern is, is no longer one.
I think my only question is procedurally, do we have to have a public hearing for a lot line amendment? I think it's a type two under SECR.
It's a type two, it's, I'll give you the actual quote, what is it, it's, uh, NYCRR six one seven five, it's a, it's an, it's a, it's an adjustment, it's a lot adjustment.
But I think this is, it is re-subdividing three lots into four?
Oh, you can also waive a public hearing, so in the case of a re-subdivision, which alters lot lines dimensions of lots previously created, the board may modify or waive any provision, the subdivision regulations include provisions that relate to submission approval filing, and you can waive the public hearing.
Just say anything about them, they're not increasing.
You wouldn't waive the public hearing for, let me finish, you wouldn't waive the public hearing for the site plan? Of course you wouldn't do that, but I don't really what there is to look, I've got, I'm, I wanna create these three conforming village business lots, where there are three, and the three that are there don't make any sense, all right? I don't know, it doesn't, you know, I'm gonna have to come back for a very detailed site plan.
Site plan.
Uh, I'm gonna have to go to the ARB, depending upon how Chris determines what the parking issue is, 'cause there are existing parking variances with run, which run with the land, and I'm putting some new parking in?
Yeah.
So we may or may not go to the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, I'm, this is either gonna be an easement. And, you know, this is either gonna be an easement for the public, or dedicated, again, I think it should just be dedicated, but, which is something that you can't require, but I think it's, it's good planning, makes sense. Right, so you were looking for just a smell test tonight from us? Oh, I'd love you to approve it.
I would think if the board felt inclined, we might ask council to prepare a written decision, 'cause I think that would be typical for a subdivision, that way we'll have something in, in writing.
So you're gonna be able to fully torture me on the site plan, or we're approving.
Oh, I think we might ask council to write or prepare a written decision for review at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And that, review, or reviewing exactly what?
Well, council, right, for a lot line amendment, council, right.
So that's all we're asking for here, is a lot line amendment at this point?
Well, I, I will just highlight, and I know it's a technicality that's kind of a pain in this case, 'cause the fourth lot is being created to, deed to the village, but the way the code is written like that is, you are actually creating an extra lot, 'cause you're starting from three, so I just wanna make sure we're not doing something that's not, not an illegal issue, 'cause, especially with the waivers, where it says that, that as long as, doesn't.
That's, that's the sort of thing.
Not create additional lot, I agree, it's like a technicality in this point that, like, I would love to just.
That's the sort of thing that when I was a municipal lawyer, I would just sort of hold my fire on, 'cause this is a good thing, so why would you hold it up when this is gonna be a part of benefit, regardless of whether or not it's dedicated.
I'm just putting the question to Janine.
Well, I think we'll.
You can waive.
I'm gonna look into it, I'm gonna characterize it as he characterizes it, and see if it goes up from there, I think the best thing to do, John, is let me look into it, I'll, you know.
Okay, you can, again, you can, when it comes to alteration of lot lines, you can waive anything, I'm not creating another lot, per se, offering this area for dedication, Bobby Smith calls it a lot, I guess, but, I don't know, whatever, whatever you wanna do, Jean, I don't want you to be uncomfortable.
Well, I wanna make the board comfortable, otherwise then I'm uncomfortable, right? When they're uncomfortable, so, you know, 'cause you got, you're starting with three, and you're adding, but you're really taking away from three to give four, right? Is that?
Well, the fourth is just the walkway.
That walkway, I'm just saying, right, that four.
It's not a lot, per se.
Well, okay, you have space.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah, you have it showing it.
Or you can dedicate from three, maybe it's a three-lot subdivision with Lot Three dedicating X, right?
You could do it that way.
Yeah.
You could do that way.
Well, I mean, that's the same thing.
Gotcha.
But I like the way he did it, so you can see, then they all come out with twenty-two point three two. But you want all the lots to be even, so you're, you're not really taking part of three, or, 'cause you have to change all the lot, you know, to include that.
And quite, quite honestly.
I don't know.
It's public service.
And, and, and we're very upset about that, going right up to the, their property line, so I figured that would help them out, 'cause they're good citizens.
But you're not making Lot Three skinny, Lot Three is, is drawn, is the same as the other.
Yes, they're all the same.
So you wouldn't say it's taking just from three, I think?
No, 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 I understand.
Or unless you were gonna make that wider and then give it away. Well, if I even took the five foot and added it to twenty-two point three two. Yeah, you could do that, if you could, yeah, but, yeah, you could add it to three, it's just whatever works.
This is really, sorry.
Technically, it's gonna merge with the right-of-way when it's dedicated to the village, so it's not really gonna stand as separate.
That's interesting.
Arguably, arguably.
It'll merge with Jobbs Lane, I guess, and also, merge with the village parking lot. So Janine, if you draft something and circulate it, and, and check, you know, releases issue, you know, if that works, and we'll do it at the next meeting, on the fifth. Look, there's not gonna, I just want everyone to be comfortable, this is not, I'm not trying to say, you're not gonna come back for a site plan.
You'd have to go way down.
Yeah, I just wanted to check.
It not only helps, it not only helps Susan, it helps everyone to be able to walk back there, you have to go all the way to the end, so this is actually a very nice thing.
I couldn't agree with you more.
You must, you must be thrilled, that's fine, we're not gonna give you a hard time about this.
More than a day.
Let's just make it happen.
Yeah. No, we're not done. Okay, so I, I understand now, John, we've gotta do the lot line modifications, which you'll draft a memo on, and then you'll come back with a site plan approval. Yeah, that's fine, okay. And go to the zone, and A or B, maybe the ZBA.
So why don't we motion to adjourn this to the next meeting, and in the meantime, council, research and write a written, prepare a written decision if appropriate.
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn East End Holdings to the next meeting, to give our council time to research the, the fourth lot topic that Lisa.
Has highlighted.
Highlighted, and then draft a lot line amend, you know, a lot line amendment. It's called an approval. Approval, that will, that will consider at the May fifth meeting, that number circulates in time, okay? And a second for that?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And people are getting punches, we gotta, thank you, all right, so, very quickly here, no one's here for eight sixty-five, Merrick, right, no do so, Alex, you wanna adjourn that to the, a motion to adjourn that to the May fifth?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, we haven't gotten anything new.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Brian Kelly, can you explain what's going on there, the folks?
So Brian, this application needs some relief from the zoning board, they've been to the zoning board and presented, the zoning board has asked for some information, that application has been adjourned many times at the zoning board, the zoning board has told them that they need to reply by a certain date, or else the zoning board will dismiss the case, and I understand that they intend to appear at the next zoning board.
Which is?
I believe it's the twenty-fourth of this month.
Okay, so we'll.
It's the Thursday meeting.